Our fifth meeting of fiscal year 2021 to order. In accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, people may participate via Zoom. The ID and passcode are available on the planning board agendas found on the planning board page on the Town of Milton website. Let's see, citizens may view this program on cable access, live streaming, or at a later date on the cable access website. They can view the recording there. So we can start by introducing ourselves and our members and staff. I'm Denny Swenson, chair. Kathleen?
Kathleen O'Donnell, member.
Meredith? Oh, we need to unmute Meredith.
Meredith Hall, member.
And Cheryl?
Cheryl Togias, member.
And Tim? Oh, he's muted, so I will go to Julia.
Julia Getman, clerk.
Okay, and I don't know if we can hear Allison. Allison Quinn, our assistant town planner, is working through some technical difficulties. Maybe she will be able to text me or something during this meeting, but hopefully we can get through this. And Tim, did you want to introduce yourself?
Yeah, Denny, I'm here. Tim Zerwinski, director of planning and community development.
Excellent, thank you so much. Okay. So let's discuss next meeting dates. September 22nd, it's a Wednesday. That's still good for everyone. And, okay, and October 14th is a Thursday. And I'm assuming that both of those will still be virtual until we hear otherwise. We will just keep planning ahead because of the COVID guidelines. So we don't have Rich, but I thought we might want to approve the minutes because they're beginning to build up. So I don't know if anyone has any objections. Cheryl made a couple amendments a while back. I changed the words from neighborhood association to neighborhood coalition. That was the extent of my amendments. Did anyone else?
Denny, if I may, which meeting dates are we looking at now? It's the ones that we looked at and deferred, right?
Yeah, July 8th, August 12th, and our last meeting, August 26th.
Also, excuse me, sorry, August 12th, there's four, there's July 8th. And then we approved July 20th at the August 12th meeting. And then we need August 12th and August 26th.
Got you.
All right, I haven't read the 26th yet, but I'm fine to go forward with July 8th and August 12th.
So am I, I've moved to accept those.
As amended?
As amended.
And Meredith, second, okay, all in favor? Cheryl?
Yes.
Meredith? Yes. Kathleen?
Yes.
And Denny, yes, we've approved July 8th and August 12th of 2021 as amended. All right, and Tim is going to give us our staff update. And then immediately after that, before citizens speak, I wanted to give Tim the opportunity to talk about the 237 Hillside Street road approval. He has an update for us, and he has to get to another meeting, so I wanted to accommodate him.
Thank you, Denny, appreciate that. So in terms of staff update, I could, I could talk a lot, but I'm going to talk a little. Just about a couple of quick things. One is just to sort of preview your next meeting, which is the 22nd. There are, there are three public hearings for that meeting. One being the, the rules and regulations amendment that you've been talking about regarding some of the tree protection language. We've already kind of discussed that, you know, in, in a public setting. I'm really hoping that we can kind of dispense with that item pretty quickly. There's also the 440 granted have, public hearing is going to restart. You may, I forget if I talked about this at the last meeting, there was a little bit of a kind of scheduling snafu. The chain of continuation of those hearings stopped, and so we had to re-advertise it and re- re-notice it to folks in the neighborhood. Nothing has changed, well, hopefully some things have changed. But it, the application that we have in front of us is the same application that we've been talking about for however long we've been talking about it. It's just, you know, a, a technical kind of scheduling matter kind of required us to, to re-notice that hearing. So if you live in the neighborhood, if you're watching and you got a new notice for a new public hearing, it's really the same public hearing functionally that we've been having for the past few months. We just needed to sort of handle that kind of legal issue. And then finally, there's going to be a, a public hearing for a proposed amendment to the Wentworth Farm Road Cluster subdivision. I, if you, I don't know if anyone's been down there that way off of Ford Rags Road recently. That subdivision is coming along, the road is mostly built. There are a few houses that have gone up. Some of them are in later stages of construction than others. You know, just like a lot of subdivisions that we approve, there's going to wind up being a homeowner's association in charge of some of the common areas and the infrastructure. And, you know, it is going to be a private way, so they'll have to take care of that. That homeowners association hasn't formed yet, but there are, there is, I think, a critical mass of, of owners that are either already living there or have bought lots and are familiar with the site. And so we got a request a few weeks ago from one of the homeowners that, you know, says she's representing some of her, her compatriots. And I think Denny and Cheryl are probably the only folks on the call besides Julia and myself who were around for this special permit. But you may remember that one of the waivers that was, that was granted for that special permit was the, the requirement to have sidewalks on both sides of the, of the, of the road. And, and the way the planning board kind of, you know, compromised on that was there was a proposal for a sort of a reinforced permeable grass kind of sidewalk. Not a, a true sidewalk, but a, a very clearly delineated kind of walking area on one side of the, of the road. The folks that are at the site now that are owning some of these lots have expressed an interest in amending the special permit to remove the requirement that that, you have built. It's a little bit of a kind of logjam because in order for the bond that was placed for the construction of the road to be released, the road has to be constructed to the specifications of the special permit. The special permit says that that grass sidewalk has to be there. And so if folks want it gone, there's got to be an amendment to the special permit. So without deliberating or discussing or asking any questions, I just wanted to sort of give you all a preview of coming attractions for that one. Mary McCetrick will be there to make a presentation about the request and, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll deal with that when it comes down the road. And then the, the last thing that I wanted to remind folks of is we've got a, a site visit next week down in Milton Village to meet with Dotson and Flinker, our consultants that are working with us on the Milton Village Design Guidelines. So I think that's Thursday afternoon or Thursday morning. It should be on your calendars, but if, if it's not, I'll make sure that I send that out and we'll.
It's the 16th at 10 a.m.
Okay, so the morning of the 16th. Okay, so that's the type of thing where we'll probably want to post that as a public meeting just so that the planning board has the opportunity to talk and discuss and, you know, deliberate on things. Our consultants are interested in, in seeing the sites and kind of getting a little bit more awareness and information kind of directly from the source about, you know, what the purpose of the zoning is and kind of what the process, you know, behind it was. So, you know, very much looking forward to that. And that, that'll give Dotson and Flinker the ability to really kind of get moving on, on some of the work that they need to do in order to advance those, those guidelines. So those are just the two really quick things I wanted to talk about. I don't know if anyone has anything for me before I move on to Hillside Street.
Denny, I just want to point out that Rich is in the attendees.
Hey, I think Allison is on it.
Can you guys hear me okay? I'm finally in.
Yay, welcome, nice to see you.
I'm trying to figure out how to promote Rich.
Oh, okay.
But he doesn't seem to want to let me.
Okay. All right, well, we'll let Tim, Tim continue on while you work on that. And hopefully we'll, we'll have Rich after.
Thanks, Denny. So I, I, I think I emailed the board to this effect, but I wanted to take just a minute or two to kind of explain the conversations that I've been having with town council about the 237 Hillside Street scenic road decision. You know, we had a pretty long conversation about this at the last meeting. You know, just to sort of recap for everybody, you know, the, the planning board approved the application conditioned upon a favorable report from historical commission. The scenic road regulations, you know, asked the planning board to consult with the conservation commission and the historical commission on these applications. The historical commission considered the application on two different occasions, wasn't able to, to come to, you know, a point where, where they could say that they, they approved of the, of, of the project. And so it sort of creates, you know, to, to use a, a term that I've been using a lot tonight, a, a logjam for the planning board where, you know, the, the, the project can't get a building permit because the conditions of the approval haven't been met because another board has made a decision that is, is contrary to what the conditions of the special part, or the, the approval say. And so I, I, I went to town council and kind of said, you know, how do we? How do we address this? And, and basically, you know, in, in his research and experience, you know, this, I don't know if this comes up often in, in scenic road permits, but, you know, there is case law regarding, you know, boards, whether it's a board of appeals or a planning board. You know, essentially, you know, for lack of a better term, kind of delegating decision-making authority to other boards. And, you know, to, I'm not a lawyer, but I'll just describe it as it's, it's not good. And then you're not really supposed to do it. So, you know, this particular type of decision, there's, there's not a ton of, of case law on, but other types of decisions that planning boards have made, there is case law. And so, you know, it, it's a pretty, it's a pretty cut and dried thing in his eyes that, you know, the, the decision needs to be, you know, cleaned up and, and kind of clarified to, to really sort of, you know, the planning board's got to, you know, either approve the project without any kind of condition that another board also approves, or you've got to deny the project or offer some type of, you know, advice or guidance or, or whatever with the, with the applicant to kind of get to a point where, where, where you can approve the project. And so, a, a, you know, as a practical matter, what's going to need to happen is we'll have to open a public hearing to amend the decision. You know, that public hearing is closed, the decision was rendered. I know there was a question about constructive approval. You know, that, that's not something that comes into play here because there's another kind of fundamental issue about the nature of the approval. So we'll need to open a new public hearing to amend the decision. And, you know, notice that and, and send the butters notices and everything. And then, you know, we'll have to bring the applicant back and, and kind of have that, have that public discussion about, you know, what is, you know, is it, is, is it as simple as the planning board just removing that condition? Or, you know, does the board feel that it needs to see, you know, project changes in order to get to a point where, where it can approve? So that's, you know, that's that. I, I haven't had a chance to kind of run through this with the applicant. I wanted to talk to the board first. This may be something that, you know, we're going to be seeing them tomorrow. There's a, a site inspection that, that we've scheduled at noon tomorrow to go down there. So that'll be something I'll talk with, with the applicant about, about, you know, how, how we want to schedule that and, and get them back in front of us. So just while, while I, I still have the floor, I just want to talk about tomorrow's site visit. This has come up in the past, I think particularly related to some of the 40B site visits we've done. The, the advice that I've gotten and that the select board and that the board of appeals and that every board that asks has gotten from town council is on these types of site inspections, that they, they not be posted as, as a public meeting. Site inspections are exempt from the open meeting law. You know, for the purposes of boards and committees going out to sort of view a site and kind of get, you know, a, a firsthand look at, at, at a project or a site or, or something like that. So they're exempt from the open meeting law in the sense that they don't need to be posted as a public meeting. There doesn't have to be a posted agenda. The caveat being, you know, and, and you've, hopefully folks have heard this before, because we've done this before. No deliberations, no talking, no questions. So it, it really is very strictly, you know, go and, and check out the site. You know, the applicant may have some information that they want to pass along, but we're just there, we're just there to look and listen. You know, there, there's a lot of reasons why, I think in, in this particular specific case, you know, we, we don't want to put a private homeowner in the position of, of having the public come onto their property if they're not interested in doing that. And then, you know, given the sort of nature of Hillside Street, there's not a really ton of room to congregate generally. So I just wanted to sort of give you all that kind of heads up. I will be there and I will be ensuring that we are open meeting law compliant tomorrow. So, you know, I, I've asked the applicant to kind of prepare kind of explanation of what you can be expected to see in terms of the, the layouts that they've flagged out for those potential driveways. And, you know, just a little bit more background on what their, what their project is about. So that's that, a 237. I've got four minutes if you all have any questions or want to talk about anything. And if not, we can kind of figure out offline exactly how we want to schedule the next steps.
Question, is Tim going to be able to address his memo related to memory care, assisted living zoning?
Is four minutes enough to try to quickly to, to give us your opinion on the memory care approach, general by law or?
It's, it's, it's probably, it's probably not.
Okay.
I can, I, I, you know, I mean, cross your fingers that the, the, the meeting on Ice House doesn't go super long. My hope is that they, they've got a draft decision in their hands, and it should be as easy as just approving it, but we'll see. So if that, if that ends up, I'll come back and, and hopefully have a chance to do that.
Okay, I think, I think our discussion, I think we have a lot to discuss, so I, I hope we. Okay, I think, I think our discussion, I think we have a lot to discuss, so I, I hope we can have your participation. So, good luck.
So going back to the, going back to the Highland Street issue is that I disagree with town council's view that there is not a constructive grant on this permit already. Because we didn't act and we didn't issue a, a proper decision within a timely manner. And
Oh, you mean Hillside? You're talking about Hillside?
Hillside.
Okay.
The driveway.
Okay.
That's my, I disagree with town council's analysis on that. I agree with him that he says that we have a decision that is not proper because we made it subject to the approval of another board. And there's, I, I understand there's, I've looked up since that decision was issued and checked on the case law and that's correct. But in my opinion, we had a time period with which to issue a decision. And we didn't. And that time period has passed. So I think as, as far as I'm concerned, that permit has been constructively granted for the work that they want to do. I think what it does, this whole situation leads me to the idea that our rules and regulations on scenic roads are pretty terrible. They don't have any requirement to provide a plan, which I know everybody has pointed out that we should have seen something that says what they were going to do and where they were going to do it. But that's not a requirement in our rules and regulations. And so if we're taking a look at our rules and regulations, I would put that on the list of issues that need to be updated. Because we don't have, you know, we don't, we don't include and we don't request enough information. They're not required to give us all this information that we would like to see. So as I said, I, I, as far as I'm concerned, they, they have their, they have a constructive grant of what they want to do. So that's what I said, but that's, that's my opinion, not town councils.
Okay, well, you're welcome to come to the site.
I will, but I mean, as I said, I, I, you know, as, you know, as far as I'm concerned, I want to be on the record to say, I think they have what they need to get for their approval. Because we didn't make a proper decision within the time.
So who would actually, so let's just think through the mechanism. So they could.
Can I just allow Tim to go to the next meeting because I think his, but I think that what we can do is we'll go on the sidewalk. I'll have a town council take a look at this part of the tape, or perhaps Kathleen want to talk to town council. But I think we can let Tim go.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And we can carry on this.
And we wish him luck.
Hopefully I'll be back with some good news, but.
Okay. And if I could ask Cable Access if they could move Rich Beeler from attendees to panelist along with the rest of our board. He, he joined us a little bit late. Okay, all right.
Was there any feedback?
Yes.
Finish my question or thought. It had to do with, I don't, is a building permit required to build a driveway? And I mean, what's the mechanism? Let's just say like, let's say the owners of that property agreed with Kathleen. What would be? You know, would Joe Prondak be the one who says yes or no? Or, or, I'm just kind of trying to understand, you know, where there's this difference of opinion. How would that play out?
I imagine it may have gotten flagged because they're, they're talking about more than a driveway or garage. So maybe it was Joe Prondak that flagged it. But that's a good question.
That's okay. Is it, is this for the scenic road?
Yes.
That, that is what, it's a bylaw. So there's a scenic road bylaw in the town of Milton. And if you are, the language is somewhat fuzzy to me, but my understanding is if you are removing stone that exceeds a certain length, that you're required to have the planning board review it.
But so because you don't have to get a building permit for a driveway, how is it enforced, I guess is what I'm asking. Because would somebody say, Kathleen O'Donnell thinks we have constructive approval. I'm going to start on my driveway. And I'm just wondering, is there something that says, no, that's not true, or that's not, you know, I, I just, you know, on a building permit, it's clear on a, on a building, it's clear the building inspector, Joe Prondak in our, in our case, has to issue a permit and wouldn't issue it. Or if it's something that's being done not according to permit, can issue a stop work order. But I just don't know the mechanism on a driveway. I'm trying, maybe we could get clarity on that, Allison, you know, if we're going to be talking about this again.
Yeah, I'll plug in. I, I get what you're saying. I, I do believe it would be Joe Prondak is the enforcer, but I will have that information for you in the very near future, like tomorrow.
It's, it's another tragic situation of our rules and regulations is that looking at other examples, we don't have any enforcement language in our scenic bylaw. So I'm looking at an example from another town and they do have an enforcement mechanism and they say in three paragraphs, what can happen to you if you, if you don't follow the bylaw, but we don't have that. So it answers your question. I don't know what happens.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that became part of the issue with, with the other property nearby where a lot of the, the developers said they didn't realize they needed the permit, right? And then what was our enforcement? We had lots and lots of discussion about that, right? So I do think, I, I agree with you, Kathleen. This is something that needs to get addressed. And not only the rules and regs, but in scenic road bylaw, it sounds like both.
Well, our rules, the scenic bylaw is in our rules and regs.
Okay.
So the other thing that we should also consider is that, which I don't know, Kathleen, if this falls into that we didn't make a decision soon enough. Part of the, there were two things that happened. I think one, that they, it came too late for the, the Historical Commission was meeting and they didn't, they didn't know to discuss it at one meeting. And then the following meeting, we had asked the applicant to flag the location. So we, so we knew, we, we looked at a sketch, a drawing, but we really didn't know exactly how it was going to be laid out. So they were asked to flag the location. And they left to go to, they have a second home. I think they went away to Vermont or something and they were gone for a period of time. And so when the Historical Commission met the following time, it hadn't been, when the first time they discussed it, there were no flags. So there was nothing, they didn't know what they were approving. And then it was, so then it was, it got bumped to that next meeting. So that was part of the delay is that they, they didn't put the flags up for about a month until after we had asked them.
Yeah, but there's no obligation to put in flags. Yeah, yeah, I know. I see your point.
That we made a request of them so we could identify the site and they did not act on that. So I think that, I think otherwise the decision could have been, you know, made much more quickly. So.
Well, I mean, as I said, so we have to do a decision within 21 days of the public hearing. And, and we do a decision that has a language in it that's not, that's not legal. Because our decision is to say that we, it's, it's contingent upon the approval of the Historic Commission, which we can't do. So essentially our decision is, is not a viable decision, is my point. Not that, you know, that, so the 21 days, we issue something and it's not, it's not a decision that can be, that can be followed. Because it's contingent on the approval of another board. So it's like not making a decision at all. In my opinion.
Unless we, yeah, make that amendment. I don't know. I would ask council, yeah.
Just, can I ask a question, Danny?
Yes, Rich, hi.
Hi. It could, I'm sorry, I was pausing because I started thinking when I was in the meeting, when I was just in the meeting for that time, I felt like I was in a box because I couldn't say anything. So question, so town council, it sounded like had an opinion though, even though like I get, Kathleen, I heard what you said, that makes sense to me. I'm not a lawyer, so I, I take your opinion. But like, so did they have an opinion on what the next step was? I did, I don't think I.
Right.
Go ahead, Danny, sorry.
Basically, what Tim said was that town council advised us to revisit it, have another open meeting law, a meeting, have a, have another open meeting, do a revote. So because the last ruling that we had was contingent upon the Historic Commission's approval. So we would have to vote on it one way or another without any contingency on the Historic Commission's approval.
Okay, I appreciate it. No, that makes sense. And I, I thought I got that. So I guess my then question is to everybody then, like especially you, Kathleen, what are your thoughts on like, what's quicker? Like, is it the route that you just said, or is it that route? Because it sounds like, unless I'm mistaken, it sounds like we kind of, we wanted to move forward with this, we just wanted to. Right? I mean, or, yeah. And so what's the quicker one, the easier one for the, for the homeowner?
Well, we have to re-advertise a public hearing. I mean, it's up to the public. I mean, you know, I'm not, I'm not giving advice to the homeowner to say run for luck and just go ahead and put in the driveway and see whether somebody steps over you.
Cross, like on this committee, like, so do we just keep run with, like, you know what I'm saying? Like, I, I guess, I was curious and what's. Go ahead.
I, I think we're obligated to follow town council's advice. But I do think I, I'm interested to hear Kathleen. She looked at state case law, but we are kind of obligated to, to go forward with what town council says to avoid any litigation because he would be the one who would be dealing with any litigation.
Well, no, and, and just before you go into that, so that's the only way, reason I was mentioning it is almost like, like, so if, if you thought the other route was quicker, would it be, would it make sense to us to just go back to town council and say, hey, we want this to go through? What's the fastest way? I mean, can we just, you know what I mean? Like, let, somebody should be advising them on what to do next, the quickest route? Because I'm just, I feel bad that now we're past the date. If you're in this limbo, now it's what do we do? I just don't want to see this go on any longer if it's a pretty easy decision. So my question is, what's the easier route? And if the easier route is what Kathleen said, then why don't we just ask town council? As long as nobody's going to fight them on it, like, you know what I mean? Like, I'm just throwing it out there.
Yeah.
Well, I'm happy to, I'm happy to talk to Kevin if you'd like, Danny, you know, and, and see what's, I mean, we have a sidewalk tomorrow. You know, take a look as, you know, going to Meredith's point. Maybe they'll give a better explanation of what they're doing.
I would really like the board to see the site. I, I think it's not, it seems like it would be rich, a really simple, you know, thing, but it's, it's actually not as simple when you go out and actually see the site and look at the impact. So it's, I, I just, I look forward to, you know, hearing what everyone's opinions are after they see the site and do the walk and see that where the flags are located. Because part of it's not just taking stone walls down. It's also that you can't take trees down. So even if you're within the stone wall removal, you know, your, your limitation, if you stay within that, you still are not allowed to take trees down on public property without the approval of planning board. On public land.
Yeah. So I think, I just want to point out that the, my recollection, and I haven't looked at the, the language of it right before this meeting, but we have to be mindful of safety and public safety. And that is the reason that the applicant gave us for wanting to do this. And the safety of their, their children, their family. And so you know, we have to balance the sort of aesthetic interests, but also the safety issues. And, you know, I think that's just really important to reminder that that's the basis for what them coming forward.
And I think that's why it's really important to see the site because I think you can see safety issues, not only what they deal with, you know, being a neighboring, you know, having an easement close to, you know, in a certain area close to the driveway. But I want everybody to also see that when they, if they put the driveway in where they're requesting, what is their sightline going to be when they pull out of that driveway? Because there is, if anybody knows that corner, there's a lot of cut through traffic that cuts up forest. It goes up Harlan and Hillside and then cuts to forest to get on the highway. They bypass that so they don't have to be in the Randolph Avenue backup when that really backs up. So they cut through, that is a back area. And what they're going to be doing is with a narrow entrance, what they're, which, what they're stating, their sightline, because of the trees to the left and the right, they're not going to be able to see the cars coming and cutting through until they're in the road. And that's also a safety issue that I just, we, we need to be mindful of too. So.
I would point out that our scenic bylaw says that it's subject to the Public Shade Tree Act. And so they have to go through the tree warden. I don't even know if we still have somebody serving as a tree warden.
Branching.
Oh, right. I know branch. So they have to do that if they're removing any trees that are in the, you know, in the public way. So that's not even under our control. I mean, that's, that's a hearing that's held by the tree warden.
And probably the shade tree committee would.
You know, it doesn't say, so it does, it was a public shade tree law.
Yeah.
But that's monitored by the tree warden. According to what we have in our rules and regulations.
He was just involved with the, the two, the removal of the trees in front of town hall that he addressed that needed to be removed and replaced. So he's, he's very much active in the community. So.
Yeah, no, as I said, I know, I used to work with his wife.
All right. All right, so lots to think about tomorrow.
But not talk about.
All right, we can't talk at this, at this sidewalk. We can listen. They'll do a presentation. Tim's going to ask a lot of questions. You can look at the flags and safety and the access and all these easements and everything else. So look forward to seeing you all at noon. And if you can't make it at noon, they do have the flags up. People can stop by, drive by and pull over and peek. All right. So our next agenda item is the Winter Town articles. And I was hoping we could spend some time on the memory clinic tonight. It's my understanding that the proponent has an update for us. I did receive a letter. So that would be Northland. So I thought we could hear from them. And then I could pull up some of the highlights from the letters that we've received. And then we could hopefully hear from Tim, get his staff's opinions on a couple of approaches. So are we able to bring the representatives of Northland and the Milton Hospital? Allison, did you have that list of?
Boy, so Ned has his hand raised if he can be, if he can be promoted to, to panelist. I don't know. I don't have a list of his other presentees, but if they can raise their hands, then Milton Access can promote them as needed.
Okay, I see Mr. Fernandez, you're, you're on the panelist. Oh, we'll hear from you soon. Hello, Mr. Corcoran.
Good evening. I think the other, the names that I submitted request to be included as panelists are Rich Fernandez, who I see on the panel, Jim Coughlin from Northbridge.
Yes, he has hand raised.
Okay, and Mike Walrassack, who is the new project manager.
And his hand is raised too.
And Blaine Buck.
Okay, let me see. Okay, Blaine, could you raise your hand, Blaine Buck? I, I see him in the attendees, but we need to move Blaine Buck to the panelists. Oh, I see Blaine Buck. Okay, so it seems as though you have your colleagues, Mr. Corcoran. Okay. I, I turn it over to you, Mr. Corcoran, to give us your update. Thank you.
Thank you. And Allison, are you able to share a screen with the plan that we submitted in the last 48 hours? I shared it with Tim.
Ned, I have the, the, the letter. I will try and find the plan. Is it okay to put the letter up for now while I scan for the plan or does that screw up your presentation?
No, but. Um, no, but it would be very helpful to see, to show, uh, the amended plan.
I can probably get that, uh, uh, open quickly if you'd like me to do it, Denny.
Okay.
Thanks Cheryl. I, I had to use my daughter's computer because, you know.
No, it's not, it's not a problem. I understand the challenges. Just give me one, one minute.
Allison, we can all relate. Especially me. And, uh, Mr. Corcoran, are you in Idaho?
I am in Ketchum, Idaho.
All right.
It's been a long day. Uh, no, a family wedding.
A wedding. That's exciting.
I have a sister who lives in Boise and her younger, younger of two sons is getting married on Saturday.
Oh, well, congratulations.
A whole man, a whole parcel of Corcoran family, um, has traveled west. Join the festivities. Um, a long day of travel today, but we, we're all here and, uh, great to be out here. Thank you.
Do you all see the plan now?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, I can see it.
Great. Um, so Danny, if it's helpful, I, I, I get a couple of updates in a, in an overview of the plan, particularly some modifications. Um, that we've worked on over the last four to six weeks. Um, we had hoped to have this plan ready to, for distribution to neighbors and the board by last week. Uh, so that we could have, uh, a, a meeting with neighbors before this meeting. It's generally been the practice that we meet. With neighbors before we meet, uh, with, uh, any of the boards. But we weren't able to do it. The, the, the plan came in, uh, late on Tuesday. And I distributed it to neighbors and the board and I distributed the letter in, uh, final draft form. I know that it's been resubmitted today. On, uh, Northbridge, uh, letterhead and the, and the letter sort of explains, uh, the modifications in the plan. We had several meetings with, um, fire chief and lieutenant, uh, Mattaliano. Uh, we met with, uh, DPW and town engineer to review some of the utility and fire. Safety issues of significance. Fire chief and lieutenant Mattaliano determined that the roadway that was proposed for the, um. Emergency access around the back of the building on the right side of the plan, as you see it. Sort of along the Bacardi property line, uh, has been removed. Uh, the chief, uh, did not feel it was necessary. He requested some additional. Uh, uh, architectural features internally, uh, fire suppression systems internally that his men could, could tie to, uh, with hoses. They have plenty of access to the building and determined that it would not be necessary to incorporate, um, this, um. Road around the, um, the Bacardi side of the property, which really effectively preserve, preserve. Preserves at least thirty feet of area, uh, that would have been clear cut, uh, to make, make way for the, for the road. There was a fifteen foot wide roadway. Constructing that, uh, green paver pervia, impervious surface roadway would have affected trees on both side. Sides of that road. Uh, we're pleased that we're able to, uh, to, to manage to avoid, um, constructing that and therefore preserving. A significant set of trees, uh, along tree canopy, along the Bacardi property. Uh, we do need to go out and survey, uh, the significant trees that are on the property, including trees on the Bacardi property, on the Bacardi property to know what's there. Um, and then obviously, um. In terms of a tree managed, a, a tree preservation plan that would be part of any special permit application, uh, that would be filed under zoning, if such zoning is approved. There are a couple of other features that are along that same side. There is a, a shallow drainage swale. That is shown that will pick up, um, stormwater, um, as it, uh, if it, uh, this summer, it obviously has been a historic. Uh, summer in terms of rain, uh, and there has been significant rain issues, um, on the property that are unusual relative to, um. Property in the past, uh, as a. As a component of, um, a separate filing with, an updated filing with, with the conservation commission. Uh, we have done an analysis of, of the flood capacity, the flood area on the property, not just the wetlands. But we've also identified the edges of the flood storage area, which is a broader area that shows that when there's a significant rain. Fall that there is some flooding on, on the property. We've identified the areas with that would tend, that would, that would, uh, be. This drainage well will be there in, in, in case of, uh, one of those high flood, um, of, of high rain events that might cause some flooding. There are, uh, also at the fire, uh, chief Madden's request, we slightly widened the driveway. From the proposed driveway from twenty feet to twenty-two feet to ensure that there's adequate width. Uh, for emergency vehicles, uh, to, to, um, get in and out of the property. His major concern was that his fire apparatus could get to the front door and his men could deploy within the building. Um, with hoses that would, uh, attach to, were, were called stand pipes. They are, uh, uh, fire connection. Systems within the building that, that have, that have water and you can attach a hose and run it through the, uh, separate quarters of the building. So we look forward to an opportunity, um, to meet with, uh, Ms. Bacardi and her representatives. Uh, hopefully in the near future to begin to discuss how the edge of her property could be treated. Um, she is obviously the one, um, property owner whose property directly abuts this, uh, this site. Um, the other property owner that abuts on two sides is Winter Valley, um, which is not a single family dwelling as we know. Uh, and so meeting with her and her representatives, uh, as we begin to identify landscape treatments, uh, fencing, plantings. Mature, uh, trees, um, preservation of trees and those types of things would be important. And we look forward to meeting with her and discussing that with her. We've also, uh, adjusted and reduced the amount of clearing, uh, that would take place sort of on the lower right-hand side of the property. Uh, there was a provision in the earlier plan for a rain garden that's been removed, uh, that we, which will. Preserve more trees in that area. The footprint of the building has been shrunk, uh, but not, uh, to, not to a degree that's, that is, is, um. It is difficult to, to demonstrate here, but it has shrunk. It has moved slightly away from, um, property lines on all sides. Uh, and will continue to be evaluated with respect to, um, the site. Once we had access to the site to perform, um, soil sampling, test pits, et cetera. Um, and we're hopefully that the, hopeful that the conservation commission will approve that, uh, component, um, uh, of our plans next Tuesday evening. So, um. A couple of other issues we have, um. This, with, with, um, respect to utilities, uh, one of the issues is sewer. How will sewer be, be connected? Um, there was a, an earlier plan to run sewer the length of a gravity, uh, line. The length of the Highland Street frontage, but it would be a sewer connection to nowhere because there is no sewer. Within Highland Street, uh, in that area. Town engineer determined that wasn't necessary, but we would have to, uh, put in a pump, um, force main to connect to sewer within Spafford. Uh, Spafford Road. Uh, we've had separate conversation with Winter Valley. Uh, to see whether we can tie into their sewer, especially associated with the construction of their new building. Um, and, uh, they are willing to entertain that subject to making sure that there is adequate capacity. Uh, in the, in their sewer lines to, uh, to receive, uh, sewer from two new buildings. Obviously new building six on the Winter Valley property as well as. Um, uh, the property, this new building here. We think that that could be a real benefit, uh, certainly to, uh, the neighbors if we don't have to tear up Highland Street and part of, uh, Spafford Road. Uh, to make that, uh, connection. We have updated, as I said, the, the flood plane, uh, issues with respect to the, the, the wetland delineation plan. That's been filed with the conservation commission. The conservation commission will resume its hearing on those, that application next Tuesday evening. Will be before them on the, on the fourteenth. Um, we had hoped, as I said, to have a meeting with neighbors. But given the Labor Day, given the, the, the late, um, delivery of this plan. It, the, the, the meeting tonight and the, and the hearing on Tuesday with the conservation commission. Uh, there wasn't enough room in there to set up a meeting. And so we've, we've put out a, a, a request to meet for Monday. September twenty, which will host a meeting, uh, of all neighbors to give them, uh, much more opportunity to dig into what's in front of them here. Uh, and, and whatnot. And, and so we look forward to, look forward to that meeting. That's, I think, the highlight, um, of this, um, plan. Uh, the significant change obviously is the removal of the access road, uh, on the Bacardi side of the property. And the opportunity that that affords to do some much more robust, uh, planning in terms of landscape treatment, et cetera. And we look forward to, uh, getting test pit, uh, soil sample results so that we know, um, that the, the property. How and in what condition the property will facilitate, um, the design and construction of a building should, um, the zoning be approved. And we look forward to working with this board. I look forward, obviously, to, to, um, hearing the, the, um, uptake on, uh, Tim's memo to the board relative to approaches to zoning. But we certainly look forward to working, um, uh, through the fall with, with this board. Hopefully to a positive outcome on a recommendation for zoning for this property, uh, before the Winter Town meeting. Um, with that, I'll open it to your questions and, and comments and, um. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Corcoran. Um, if it's okay with you, um, and the, and the rest of the board, I just wanted to quickly. Uh, read the highlights from the letters we've received from the public so far. It's, it's a bit of a process. I'm sure we're going to be receiving more letters, but just to sort of keep up with them. Um, we received, uh, four letters from, um. Board of trustee, uh, Milton Hospital, um. Members and, um, see Jeffrey Marr of eleven Mark Lane. Said that he would like to see the planning board advance the proposed bylaw amendment for town meeting. Um, he said, as you may know, the hospital went through an expansive competitive process. Um, for the property's redevelopment and selected the Northbridge, Northbridge Companies. Um, he says Northbridge's proposals best met the hospital's goals for a strong economic return with a sensitive approach. To managing neighbor and other issues around things like traffic and visual impact. He said, um, we understand that to neighbors such change can be unsettling. Um, he wanted to state that he was impressed that Northbridge's, uh, sensitive approach. Um, to this opportunity includes a willingness to work with neighbors to address their concerns as much as possible. Um, so he wanted to see it advanced. Um, uh, let's see. Um, John Burke, um, basically, uh, almost had the same, um. Boilerplate. Um, he, he mentioned he's lived in Milton for forty-one years. He's of, uh, two sixty Lyman Road. He's also a board of trustee at, uh, Milton Hospital. Uh, he urges the board to take favorable action and advance the proposed bylaw amendment for the same reasons. He said it will be a major new taxpayer and will meet a key demand for memory care services for the town's aging population. Um, see Jean Schmidt, um, she's a member of the board of trustees. She's also a close neighbor to Milton Hospital at eighty-five Buckingham Road. Um, she urges the board to take favorable action. Um, similar language to the others. Um, but she also mentions, um. That the, uh, she perceives the Northbridge memory care program to be a high value, low impact development. Uh, it will be a major new taxpayer, key demand for memory care services for the town. Um, Jack Foley, uh, he lives close to the project. Spafford Road, thirty-three Spafford Road, um. Lived in at thirty-three Spafford Road for forty-five years, member of the hospital's board of advisors. Attended the presentation of Northbridge Companies earlier. Um, he's been waiting for a good use to be found to fit into this neighborhood. Something of value to the town, something paying taxes to the town, something not substantially adding to traffic. Or other possible costs such as schools. Um, he feels like this memory care project does that. His family has also benefited from memory care and he has a personal story in there. Um, and then, um, a, um, resident of Fuller Village, um, Mr. Dunphy of thirteen seventy-two Brushhill Road. Is writing in support of the memory care. Concept. Um, he was a radiologist at Milton Hospital. His wife Kathy was the first woman elected to the Milton Select Board. He said, uh, that she was a public servant on many boards. Um, sadly, I, Kathy had a cognitive ability, um, decline and. It was necessary for her to, um, uh, go to a memory care unit. He said it would be comforting to the family to know the loved one is close by and in fact, close to a local community hospital. Um, and he points to the high, uh, rate and increase, um, of, um, Alzheimer's. And, um, so he holds wordably, wholeheartedly supports this, um, proposed use. Um, and then we have, um, Mr. Henry, who, um, has, has written a number of letters and has been before our board, but he, he, um. Represents Karen Bacardi, uh, who is, her family is the abutter most affected. Um, his, um, client would like to keep the current, uh, zoning residential. Um, but if it needs to change, he has been before us on numerous occasions to discuss reasonable setbacks, buffers. And he has, you know, specific suggested language about, you know, uh, you know, disturbance zone. Um, you know, you know, how close road race can go to, um, abutters and so forth. So, so those are our, um, five letters so far. We'll read more as we come in. So, um. Tim Truinsky will be, um, weighing in. He did a four-page analysis, um. Uh, background, um, and analysis. And then he has his, um. Suggested recommendations and next steps. Um, I thought this was very thorough. Um, so we will look forward to hearing from him when he can come back and join our meeting. So, um, we have a couple of things to discuss as a board. Um, and some of you were in our meeting last, uh, two weeks ago and, um, we had talked about. Um, once, one concept being a general bylaw, um, whi- which would be townwide. And one, um, concept would be a focused, um. Bylaw that would really hone in on this, uh, neighborhood and this site and. It could be applied to other places, maybe with a couple of amendments, um, but we'd be taking a, you know, a more focused approach. And then, um, the other, um, option sort of in the wings is that, um. The proponents could, uh, create a citizen article, um, that they have sort of. Presented in, um. In a way. So the three, three, three things, uh, to discuss. I was hoping we could have Tim go first, but I guess we could start to discuss some of the pros and cons of, um. A general bylaw. And I, I, I quickly, um, tried to write out all of my points on a, on two-page, on a two-page list. So I, I could, um, sort of read through my points and if, um. And then we could sort of open it up to a board discussion, more of a kind of a roll up our sleeves and chalk while we have the proponent here. And, um, and then hopefully Tim Truinsky could join us at some point to go through his recommendations. So.
Well.
Go ahead.
Can I just say that I was the one that was considering the more.
Can I just say that I was the one that was considering the more general approach? And in the interest of time, I would say that I'm actually persuaded by Mr. Tim Schrowinski's memo and would be supportive of a more particular article and would withdraw my thought of a more general one. So.
Okay. Okay. And is Cheryl in agreement with that? Because I just want to just, are you there, Cheryl?
Yeah, I'm here. Yeah. I, you know, I think I requested that we have a staff recommendation. And I appreciate, as you said, the thoroughness of Tim's memo. And I agree with Kathleen, you know, the sort of compelling arguments that he made in there for something that, time-wise, that could drag out if it were considered to be something more general and applied more broadly. But I would like to add a caveat that I still have significant concerns generally with this approach. And I would like for us to move in the direction of what we did in Milton Village. And I know personally how long it took to get that done. And, you know, in the end, we learn something every time that we had further discussion about it. So I do think that it would be too rushed to try and do this by the Winter Town Meeting. And the parties here, you know, have spent time getting to this point. The other thing that I would like to say, and I've said it before and I'm going to continue to say it, is I am supportive of zoning. That does not mean I am supportive of this particular site plan. I still have concerns about this site plan that I think could work, that could be worked out through a special permit process, though. So I'm still concerned that, I'll just zoom in a little bit here. I'm still concerned that this is a big cutout here. And the reason I say that is this contour is the 136 contour and this terrace is at 122. So we're looking at a 14-foot change of grade across this retaining wall. And if we look here, this says contour 132 and it's one-story. So we have a one-story section that's relatively approximate. There is a retaining wall here, but it's not as high as this one here. So, you know, I know this design team has been working furiously on this, but I would like to say that I think the site plan still raises concerns for me in all of the ways that we've talked about on many projects. Cut and fill, you know, the kind of approach to the lay of the land. And, you know, the retaining walls. Once they do a tree survey and we can get a balance between preserving trees and doing retaining walls, there's more design work that could be done. So I'm not saying that I don't think it can be done and that a project can't be of, you know, this number of units and this general configuration can't be made to work. But, you know, I just want to say that supporting the zoning doesn't necessarily mean that the project design is complete. Okay? So that's where I am, and just want to be clear about that. And I'm absolutely, as I've said before, feel as if the Planning Board should sponsor zoning rather than citizen petition. This would be a lot more complicated than Winter Valley. And we saw how challenging it was to get the Winter Valley, our suggestions for Winter Valley incorporated into the citizen petition language. And I recognize that memory care is an important use. I supported the assisted living bylaw when it was passed some years ago. I wished it wasn't so specific to that site at the time. I was on the Warren Committee at the time and I remember discussing it at the Warren Committee. So the use is appropriate. The proximity to the hospital is appropriate. The partnership with the hospital and this particular operator is important. So I do think, given that, that the Planning Board should be the one sponsoring the zoning.
Right. Allison, keep that drawing handy. But would you be able to pull up the assisted living residence Development Section 3 Subsection P document? Which is what we.
I'm sorry. So I'm a little bit dark. Is that something that?
Oh, sorry. That went into the shared folder probably later in the day. I mentioned that we might want to have that. That is, we keep referring to the bylaw from Randolph Avenue. That was an assisted living bylaw. Ned was probably familiar with it, probably familiar with the language. And he dusted it off, made some amendments. I read through the amendments. I thought they made sense. It was about changing it from Randolph Avenue to making it applicable to this site as opposed to that site mainly. And then Cheryl added some of her comments. And she added some design guidelines and so forth. I thought those were good points. And then.
I can pull it up if you'd like. It's the version that I had added comments to. I have that version handy.
Okay, that's great. Okay. So I don't want to write that thing tonight, but I just wanted the Planning Board to be familiar with this. This is in our shared folder. This is what we've been talking about. So where we are now that we have sort of taken the general bylaw discussion off the table, we're sort of back to this. This is what's in front of us now. I think Mr. Corcoran said this is the framework which he was going to develop a citizen article. However, we can adopt this as a planning board. And we can sort of pick this up where it is and start to, you know, nip and tuck, you know, make amendments and so forth and start to, you know, you know, address the questions from the public and adopt it as our own. So that's sort of what's behind, before us. So I have a couple of, you know, points and questions because what we need to do as a planning board is decide, do we want to do that? Do we want to adopt this as our own? So I read the letters to you and we've all heard from members of the community and even the butters and the neighbors directly there that have a lot of questions. And I don't think anyone, as opposed to a memory clinic, in that it's a definite need for the community. It's a good, it's a wonderful thing to have. It's a wonderful thing to have near the hospital. It's, so it's in the public interest. There's a need. And we have a reputable developer, North Bridge, of memory care involved. There seems to be a positive relationship, an ongoing relationship with Milton Hospital and North Bridge. There's a potential to prevent denser development, also known as 40B or another type of dense project. Memory care is lower traffic use than other dense uses. There's tax revenue. As one of the letter writers mentioned, there's no impact on schools. So those are the potential benefits. And those are very important benefits to think about. So then the other column, the drawbacks or challenges to the site and zoning. I thought we could sort of talk through this and think about, you know, ways to address or mitigate issues as we sort of take through this. It's currently zoned residential A, which means we have to go through this rezoning exercise. The, it seems that the uplands of this wetlands-rich site would be completely, well, I shouldn't say completely, but graded. There's a lot of grading issues as, cut and fill issues, as Cheryl mentioned. So there's some challenges here. And surrounding wetlands, you know, there are all sorts of issues come up because of that. There would be a loss of a tree green spot in town, which is a global warming temperature kind of thing that we, as a planning board, we want to be sensitive to that as much as we possibly can. You know, our trees trap carbon, absorb water, maintain the soil and the ecosystem. And we have an awful lot of development going on over there with the proposed 40Bs. I guess it's one now, but it's really two sites. And then we have the Winter Valley building. And so we're really going to have to think about protections for that watershed and vegetation. So we can think about the trees and the buffers. And I just thought of, I did see a story, a study done, that people who look out the window and see trees at facilities, hospitals and such, tend to have a higher and faster recovery rate. So trees are, have an incredible impact on the butters and the residents. So we're, I imagine we're going to have lots of questions about, you know, how many trees can be planted in the buffer area? How many trees can go in the wetlands? What kind of trees? And I also noticed we would need a lot of evergreens, especially in the front of the site on the Highland Avenue side, because they're very much deciduous now. So the people on Highland Street in the winter months would be seeing that building if we don't take some strong, put a lot of thought into that. Okay, so we can review this list later, but I thought I'd just get it all out on the table and then we're not talking about the same three issues at every meeting. We've got a list of a lot of things to go through and maybe others might want to add to this list or I could put it in a spreadsheet form or something. But we also have a challenge with the access onto the site and off of the site onto Highland Street. It crosses an intermittent stream. Neighbors have raised a lot of issues with that. There's some questions about the width. It seems like the fire department weighed in, but we still have, you know, can they make that turn? And there's a lot of issues came up about that. So we want to work on that. And I just mentioned it because North Bridge has said that they will be working with the neighbors. So that's one of the things that I think we need to work through. So we mentioned grading, oh, retaining walls. We have a lot of retaining walls. And I wanted to work or think with Cheryl about that, about maybe possibly putting some limit on the retaining walls. You know, limiting retaining walls to, say, three feet or something to try to, try to work with the topography that's there as best we can. Then.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes. Yeah.
Can we get consensus on whether this is, there's support amongst all of us for this to be a planning board-sponsored article? Because I think that will help us with our next steps and, you know, like diving into the details or other things. And the other thing I could suggest is that, you know, Ned provided a draft of this and he made some changes that he could run through, just briefly, right? I mean, it doesn't have to, you know, be word for word, obviously, but kind of an overview of the zoning, what it is and what would need, why it needs to be changed, you know, for this particular project to go ahead. So this kind of a little bit, taking a step a little higher than where you are, you know, with some of those things. But it kind of laid the context a little bit. And I agree with you on the things that we need to discuss and the concerns that need to be addressed.
Sure. What I could do, just because I have this quick list to run through, just so people understand, there's a lot of, the public and the board understands there's a lot, we have a lot of, a long checklist to go through. And they kind of understand what they're embarking on. In other words, we would be supporting the adoption of this with the understanding that we will be working through a number of issues. So I think your idea is good. I would like to hear from Ned, but I'll just quickly go down this list. I know it's probably not honest, but I want, I want to hear from the public and I want to sort of hammer out this list in the.
But don't we first have to decide whether or not we're going to take this up as a, going back to the initial question?
I thought we could decide that after we've sort of, we just get all the issues on the table so people know what they're taking on board.
Oh, okay.
Okay. So we're just, okay. So it's just, I mean, I could have Ned go in the middle of me and then I could finish after Ned. Or I could finish, Ned could go, and then we could do our votes. Except one half of the other.
No, I think, I'm sorry, finishing makes sense. And I, sorry if I interrupted you. I just also would like clarification. You know, wetlands would be, is a concom jurisdiction. I just want to make sure that we don't wade into their territory and that's all.
Right. That's going to be something to think about. I mean, I think we just want to be sensitive to the sensitive area as we always are. But of course, there are going to be areas like, you know, the vernal pool setbacks and so forth. That's totally up to the Conservation Commission, but we just want to be sensitive in our zoning language. So. So I think I wanted to, Cheryl actually described this very well, that the footprint, I think that the footprint does need some work. It's infringing in a number of spots into the buffer zone. And I also have lots of questions about construction management. We're going to have to work through that. I don't know where the equipment is going to be able to go because the other parts of the site are wet. So, and then the concom is probably going to have environmental gives-backs so we don't want to harm that area. And then we have the setbacks issues. We will be working with Mr. Henry on the Karen Bacardi buffers, frontage, snow storage, parking. We heard their explanation, but we'll have to vet that ourselves. There's an issue with the old stormwater system that's in place from historic use. It's so old that I can imagine that it, we probably, you know, this new development probably shouldn't count on it. It's, I think it's a little bit past its expiration date based on the sidewalk. So I think that does probably mostly fall under Conservation Commission. But I think the proponents would plan to provide, you know, a robust draining plan. And it would seem in order to do that, there would need to be an engineering assessment of the integrity of the old system. So, because it's probably going to have to take over the old system. So, and then any new systems are going to have to take that into effect. And then the vernal pool question that I had seems to have been answered. I'll get that from Ned when he comes back on. But it seems that they, they set the buffer as if it's a vernal pool in case it's a vernal pool. So I'll just get that confirmation when he comes back online. And then there was an issue about, on the sidewalk, there was an issue about oil on the water of one of the ponds. I think that falls under the Conservation Commission, but that was an outstanding issue I had in my notes. So, so just to give the rest of the board a sense that we're really going to have to. So just to give the rest of the board a sense that we're really gonna have to roll up our sleeves. And, and I'm sure Kathleen and Cheryl and, and other planning board members have their list. And we're gonna also be hearing from the public, so we have a lot of work to do on this. So I will follow Cheryl and Kathleen's advice and welcome Mr. Corcoran back to sort of. Walk us through what he was thinking on the assisted living residence. Documents.
And then I'm happy to scroll this along as you like.
So I, I was involved in negotiating this last bylaw proposal. That was approved by town meeting in twenty thirteen, written substantially by Alex Whiteside. And when he was, I think, the chair of the planning board at the time, it was, it was a site specific. Bylaw that focused on property off of Randolph Avenue, Randolph Avenue being a state highway. Therefore, the property required frontage on a state highway. I suppose, and would have had to have had access to the highway at a fully signalized intersection. Probably applicable to properties over on Blue Hill Avenue. But really, it was focused on a site plan that was developed for the, the horse farm off of Randolph Avenue. The property was similar in some ways. There, there was a vernal pool in the middle of that property that had to be accounted for. And you can see in some of the language, there's a discussion about. Buildable area as opposed to non-buildable area. So right in that front section. You see. Discussion of, that requires at least a hundred and fifty thousand square feet of land that is not wetland. It is not land within the twenty-five foot buffer zone for wetlands. It is not a vernal pool and not land within a hundred feet of the vernal pool. And those are specifically areas that cannot be developed in, under the town's wetland bylaw and also generally under the state. So my thought in drafting this proposal for this site. Was to take a bylaw that had gone through a lot of scrutiny. It went to two town meetings. And in fact, historically, there was, I think in October or November of two thousand and twelve. At a fall town meeting, this proposal came before a town meeting. I had a, I had the first zoning matter on that night, and when I was finished, I got up to go to the bathroom. And when I came back. A town meeting member was up with a motion to refer this back to the, to the planning board for further study because it was too specific. And in five minutes of debate, the, the, the matter went back to the planning board. And had to be resubmitted for, for consideration at the May town meeting. This, I was hired, we worked on this bylaw. We made it a little bit less specific. But at the end of the day, this was, this was passed by the, the annual town meeting in May. Unfortunately, the developer in that case lost his option to purchase the property in the interim of the two town meetings. And the owner of the property refused to renew the option. And so the bylaw ultimately, it exists, but it, but it no longer applicable, at least to this location. So my thought was to take what had been a robustly developed bylaw. Modify it and massage it to reflect the location here and the, and the basic fundamentals of the site plan that we developed. And present it to the planning board as an article that it could work on as its own, as its own article. And that was, that's what I did. I submitted basically a red line of the existing section. Section three subsection P language, showing where there would be changes that we would, we would propose. So I eliminate, you know, the frontage on a state highway, say that has to have so much frontage on it, three hundred feet of frontage. Three hundred feet of frontage, say that at the lot line, has to have another lot line at least equivalent in length. In common with a senior housing development under Residence D one, that gets very specific. Because that means it can only be a property that would have but Winter Valley or Home Inc. And leave, left in place, the language dealing with the amount of develop, the minimum amount of square footage. Of land area that could be developed. And then, as you scroll down, the next is section two, just deals with the requirement that the developer operator be certified. By the state. The, that development had provided for a hundred units of straight assisted living. I think there was some memory care contemplated at that location. But in this case, we're talking about a smaller facility, seventy units, and so I proposed the adjustment to that language. I've since considered, and I, and I have some additional wordsmithing that I would submit to the board. For its consideration as we move forward, but I don't think we need the language about common area space. It's, it's an assisted living facility. It has what assisted facilities should have. That's really a. That, I don't think that's a zoning issue. I think that's more of a, of a building development issue. So I would recommend that we take out that section three. Section four, we've added a couple of minor modifications. So we can provide an additional services that were listed, medical and visiting nursing services would be available. As well as hourly wellbeing checks. Particularly given the fact that what's proposed here is a memory care facility. Building and accessory buildings, I've added in provision for setbacks in height. There was no provision in the, and this other bylaw for setbacks. There was a provision for height with thirty-five feet. Being the maximum height, I've added in. Someone's added in two-story building. We're certainly proposing nothing more than two occupied stories with a pitched roof. Thirty-five feet. We've got, given the site topography. We may have some minor additional massaging of that language as to how you define thirty-five feet. But we will, I will present that as additional language. And then, at, at this point, I had left blanks for new site setback requirements. The site plan shows that the, that the building is setback substantially from the front yard by. I can read, I can read my own copy of this plan, well over a hundred and fifty feet. It's over two hundred feet from the rear. And I think the building at its closest point to the Bacardi property is fifty-six feet, as it's currently laid out. So it suggests that at least a minimum of fifty feet be included in, in, as a side yard setback. Perhaps that, that number should increase based on, as we move forward, based on finer detail on the site planning. But that language, as I said, as it was approved previously, did not provide any setbacks. So if you scroll then further. There's a definition of, of, of open space, open space requirement being thirty-three percent of the buildable area. Buildable areas defined as the area that is outside of the. The wetland setbacks and the vernal pool setbacks. And obviously excludes wetlands themselves and the vernal pool. So at least thirty-three percent of the buildable area would have to be dedicated as open space. We, we've evaluated that. We think that is a, is a, is a percentage that should remain. There was provision that dealt with driveways and access that was more specifically about how does the, how do you provide driveway access to the state highway? And so I've stricken some of the language there. We certainly need some to have a safe and convenient driveway system. And driveway should provide safe and conven- convenient access to the public way that it's, that it fronts on. But some of the other language really unnecessary, particularly with a, where there was discussion of a right of way or an easement. Over property to get to and from the, the, the state highway. Section eight again, deals with rights of way and easement. That's not necessary here. This property enjoys direct access to Highland Street. There are no easements necessary for that purpose. And so I've stricken, recommended that we strike that language as being unnecessary. With respect to parking. Bided a fairly simple proviso relative to the number of parking units. We think that given the nature of memory care, that. Fewer rather than more parking spaces are necessary. What we, what we understand about the project proposed here is that. Most of the parking that is necessary is for shift changes. You know, you need spaces available for the first shift. To still be in the building when the second shift arrives. And then that number reduces quickly, and then there's additional number of spaces that are necessary for visitors. But we think it's fewer than when otherwise have been necessary. And so I added a proviso that said, you know, two, one space for every two units. Understanding in the, in the proposal on, on Randolph Avenue. The, the, many of the occupants may have driven and had their own cars. So it would have been necessary to have parking for them. In this case, memory care exclusively. There are, the, the occupants do not drive, and so there is no need to provide spaces for them, as I say. We need, we need a, a calculation for how you arrive at the number of spaces. But I'm saying that the number of spaces can be reduced in accordance with a parking and demand analysis that would be approved by the planning board. And then the location, the, the. The parking itself may not get more than three, parking driveways and sidewalks. And other walkways can cover no more than thirty-three percent of the buildable area. So that restricts the amount of land area that would be available for parking, and we think we can meet with that fairly easily. There's a provision for a sign. The town's sign bylaw, as it currently exists, and probably needs to be substantially updated. That's a, that's a topic for this board for another day, but it only deals with signs in the business district. There is no provision for signs in any other district in the town. There are lots of signs on grandfathered buildings. But there is no provision for new signs, and anytime someone wants a sign, they have to go get a variance to do it. In this case, this bylaw would authorize a single double-sided sign on, on Highland Street. You know, the main, approximate to the main site entrance, and that would be subject to review and approval by the sign review committee. The next set, site design standards are language that I think Cheryl inserted, adopted from. Probably the, the most robust set of this type of standards, which I think is greatest states. But we've reviewed that. I think it's, we think that language is substantially fine. We've got a couple of minor comments that we'll submit through building design standards. There are some, as you move further. There are some, some modifications. I don't think it's necessary, for example, to have a covered pickup and drop-off area. Within, for the building. We don't need mountains on windows. I think that was the favorite. Target of the, of the, to, of the, of the twenty-twelve town meeting, that this was too site-specific. And that, that bylaw, I think, actually discussed the colors of carpets on the floors as well. So we don't, certainly don't need to specify mountains. And then, I don't think it's necessary to discuss how interior spaces would be designed. And I think that, as I look at this, I think that's probably Cheryl's deletion as opposed to, as opposed to mine.
It is.
As you scroll further.
I can explain my logic later.
The landscape, some of the, your deletions are things that were added to the site. Site development. So you have two sections, one for site development standards and a separate one for building development standard, design standards. And you, I think you parked them in the right place. By adding the site, those, creating those two, two separate sections. Those, those items got parked in, in the appropriate locations.
Yeah, so you're right. They're not complete deletions, right?
And then the special permit application itself, you define a robust set of document. Application, components of the application. All of which are appropriate and are, and are requirements that, that the board is consistent, is familiar with. And much more specific to what you would require for a, for a full site plan and special permit application. Than what had been previously required. But I think there's more details, more specificity, and I think the approach that Cheryl's taking here is, is, is appropriate. The last, let's see, affordability, there is a provision, there's some interesting debate on that. At the two, twenty thirteen town meeting, but the, but the bylaw did provide for five percent affordable. Five percent of beds set aside for eligible recipients, recipients of certain subsidies. These are not countable on the subsidizing housing inventory because they don't have kitchens. They don't count as independent living units for that purpose. But the, I think, the twenty thirteen town, in twenty thirteen. Planning Board Warrant Committee Town Meeting thought it was important to address affordability. I've left the five percent alone, taken out the language that says. The operation will take reasonable, good faith measures to ensure inclusive inclusion of these units and the subsidized housing inventory. I don't think it's necessarily appropriate to require that, but they should present an affordability plan, and that is one of the plans. That would be required here. I think the last thing. On notice and procedures is I cleaned up. Some typographical references to standards for review of special permit applications. And so those are just minor wordsmithing. So that was the, that was the goal, was to take. A, a, a bylaw that had gone through an intense amount of effort with two town meeting reviews. That would, would work, particularly for the location that it was. And, and use that template and not reinvent the wheel. And then give this template to this board to review and work on as you get into more specific issues about this site. Certainly, a lot of the issues that you raised, any challenges, it is a challenging site. There's a lot of work that will need to be done. I think that the specific plan requirements that are laid out will require the developer to address them in great specificity. They'll also be required to address impacts, address the site planning in its application. Ongoing applications with the Conservation Commission. This, this project would require a filing of a notice of intent, issuance of an order of conditions. A whole, a number of the. Construction challenges that, you know, there should be and there will be a construction management plan that this board would review. At the same time, that construction management plan would be an important part of the application for the notice of intent. Because they'll be dealing with how to construct within this site. It's interesting that. I think Cheryl can speak to this as a, as an architect that does a lot of work in the city. Contractors are used to dealing with very tight sites. They can manage it, they can build tall buildings. They can manage it, they can build tall buildings in small city blocks, and they do it without significant amount of impact for what's around them. You basically build from the inside out and you manage, you manage your equipment. You manage your, your, your construction in ways that work. And I think, you know, that will happen here. But you certainly are entitled to see a robust, a robust construction management plan as a component of the application for special permit and as well as a component of the application for the the notice of intent that would be filed with the conservation commission. With that, that was, that was the premise, that was the idea. Start with something that the town is familiar with. See if we can make it work for this site without having to reinvent the wheel out of whole cloth. And then put it to this board for its consideration. And I appreciate your willingness to to undertake this review. It's, you know, we think it's a very important project. We know it comes with impact, we know it's change. But we think it can be done since with a tremendous amount of sensitivity. And I trust that the protections that are laid out in this bylaw will help go a long way to it to its meeting that. So we look forward to working with you in the weeks ahead on the draft of this bylaw. And then hopefully, look forward to working with you again sometime in the start of two thousand and twenty-two, if we get the opportunity to file an application for special permit.
Well, thank you, Mr. Corcoran. So next, I would like to hear from the board and then the public. Because I, it seems like we have a lot of people here tonight. So I I open it to the planning board. Do any planning board members want to speak before we hear from the public?
Denny, can I just point to some of the things that I?
Oh, yes.
Yes, because I think it does provide some of the things or at least mechanisms to address some of the things during the special permit process that might be helpful.
Sure. Can I just add one thing? Can I just add one thing? I didn't want the planning board or the members of the press to think that when we do take a vote later this evening that we're, you know, signing off on this document, every word of it, and that, and we're moving on. This is, I just wanted to give the board and the public a sense of the breadth of detail. And then we're going to let the public view it and come back at future meetings and and give us feedback and and so forth. But it's just, this is the concept. This is the homework that Cheryl has done. This is the homework in history of Ned's involvement. So I just want to put that out there. Thank you.
Okay. And there are things, I think, that we'll all want to, you know, consider, further consider in this. But you can see I made some, in some cases, I made comments with questions, not specific language additions. And so you can, you can see this on the side. So now Ned mentioned the possibility or the likelihood of their desiring to eliminate that paragraph three on common area spaces, which would therefore make some of my questions sort of mute. But then also relative to the units, since some units are going to be semi-private rooms with more than one occupant, I thought we might want to consider whether we have a total number of beds rather than just units, you know, because that's the total occupancy. It addresses total occupancy. So I don't, we don't need to debate it now, but I just wanted to to point that out. Then something that's come up that I think is important for us to really think through a little bit is the definition of grade and height because they're tied together. And we're not consistent in our different sections of our zoning bylaw and how this is measured. And it's important because it's the perception of height. If if one brings in fill and measures height from the fill, then it could be much taller than what people are actually thinking it's going to be. So again, don't necessarily want to dig into the details of that, but flag it as something that's important. And next, on the open space, Denny, you know, I think we've the Great Estates section of the bylaw where roadways were kept out of the open space. And I think that's something, you know, that offers some further protection in the buffer zone. You know, so maybe it's a certain, maybe it's percentage or or maybe driveways have their own setback, which is something we also did at the Great Estates. But it's a way to address the fact that trees are required to be cut down to put roadways in. And while we might have building setbacks, the impacts of roadway to property lines are also something we need to consider. Okay, so that's whether we do it like in the open space or or whether we do it both in open space and roadway setbacks. I thought it's something we all should talk about because it was important in that particular, particular section of the bylaw, the Great Estates. This is again related to that in terms of the location of the driveway being is something that we should pay attention to. As Ned said, I added a site design standard section, and he's right, this is largely crafted from the Great Estates. So it's, it's something that we worked through in terms of how to implement it when we reviewed the Wolf Cut Woods application. There was a fair amount of discussion. So we can go through each of these in more detail at another meeting. But it's, the site design is is separate from the building design. And it it does address things like terrain, so the slope of the property, significant trees and the landscape, the layout based on existing terrain and landscape features and the location of the driveway as well, what it looks like from adjoining properties and streets. Oftentimes, people are only concerned about what it looks like from streets, but adjoining property is up, is significant as well. The location of the building in terms of being compatible with the terrain and features of the land. So this gives us some language when we're reviewing an application to say it's not consistent with these or it is, you know, it is consistent with it. And it gives us some guidance to the applicant and what we're looking for. And I think these were were pretty useful for us in the Wolf Cut Woods application review. And then the actual landscape plan and 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 what we would expect to see in terms of landscape design. So is this, that's more, that has more to do with plantings, trees and plantings than other site strategies. And then parking, you know, addressing parking areas, dumpster location. And then this allows us, you know, some flexibility as the design evolves that we can waive particular requirements. And we did that in the design standards for the Milton Village zoning as well. Because it may be that it's not possible to reach all of these goals. And we can look at that as the design evolves in the application. And then, then this is more specific to building standards. Ned touched on a few of them. You know, the lighting, dark sky compliant is something that we looking for consistency with. I don't think we should be using words like shall on a roof design because shall means shall. You know, it gives no flexibility. I think we want to encourage certain design features. But if we make our zoning feel the shall, we're going to be looking at needing to amend our zoning, in my opinion, which we have had to do in other sections. And then interior space and the, it's really not a zoning matter, it's a building code matter. And STC ratings are in the building code for the uses. I don't think it belongs in zoning. And we'll leave, and the same thing with, you know, there's many features that are dictated by use. And so the building code addresses those on the interior. It's it's fire protection, it's life safety, it's many things. And then, as Ned said, these sections that were really site related are moved up to the site design standards now. So it's just a location, not necessarily deletion of the issues. And then what we're looking for in the application, this is, this is something, you know, we've talked about a lot and being more, needing more from applicants. So wanting the existing conditions plan to show more. So show everything that's of interest to us, not just the structures and the property lines, but driveways, stone walls, trees of certain size, rock out crappings, et cetera. And then this is important too, the description, a written description and how things will be impacted by this development. The the topographic plans are important, we've talked about that. And then, again, more information on the kinds of drawings we're going to look for, more drawings and what was required in the prior version of this. That's what these are, they're all just asking for more information, basically. This is why I said a statement of the impacts that this would have. And then a traffic impact study. And again, kind of what we've done before is that the planning board would determine the scope of that traffic impact study. And then we would discuss mitigation measures that may be required. Requiring a construction management plan, Denny, here where it wasn't required before. Also, a tree preservation plan. I think Ned added the construction management, I added the tree preservation. So I think it's, it's adding the things that we've learned from other zoning and other applications that we've reviewed. So that's, that's my summary.
Okay, well, thank you. So let's open it up to to talk to, you know, from the planning board members. And hopefully, we can hear from some of the public. Did, did any, let's say Kathleen, did you want to speak or I could turn to Meredith or we could turn to the public if if the planning board members are interested in hearing from the public next?
Well, I, I think Rich or Meredith could go and then I, I have, I just have something brief to say, but not very much, so.
Okay, okay, great. Meredith, did you want to, did you want to talk or did you want to hear from the public or or a little bit of both? I think you might be on mute. Okay, we can take the document down if that's okay and that'd be great. This is great, now I can see you. All right. Oh, Meredith, I didn't know if you wanted to speak before we.
Well, I, I think I have two, two things, and it sounds like we're, we're fairly much in agreement that we should look at this, I think, as a site specific bylaw that we're, we're looking at, that this is a unique site. I think there's a lot of reasons why we should be looking at this as a memory care site. A lot of favorable aspects to to the potential of this project. I also, and I'm not, I'm not saying I agree with the plan that I'm seeing exactly what Cheryl said. You know, it's, it's the the concept and the idea that we're moving in the direction to work on this site. Also, I do, I'm very much leaning towards the planning board sort of controlling this and letting this be our article and really make it, you know, make it our own if we're gonna, if we're gonna be addressing this. So I loved a lot of the comments that everybody made, some of the changes. Obviously, I really want to hear from the neighbors. I am greatly concerned about the Bacardi, the buffer zone between the Bacardis and that we really make that a focus. But also that Highland Street is a scenic roadway and this is a residential zone and that we really, we do what we can to protect the scenic roadway and and to keep it as natural as possible. And that includes, you know, the signage, everything that we'll be doing on there to limit the the impact. And I think the hospital's done a very nice job just with their signage and the approach into that into that drive that makes it feel as it, it's a residential entryway almost that you're coming into the hospital. I'd like to see that really feel very residential looking and not real commercial looking from a, from a streetscape. One thing that I found that was helpful on the Wolf Cut Woods was they did a small scale model, if you recall, where you could actually see, and I think even the developers, when they saw that model, it, it helped to identify just sort of the, the impact of the land and sort of addressing cut and fill and retaining walls. I think when you see something visually, not just on a model scale, but it's, it's very helpful to see the impact of those and how that topography can be worked with and limiting the retaining walls, I would very much be in agree with. But I'd like to look, you know, spend more time with this document. But I I feel comfortable if the planning board wanted to move forward with this and doing work on this as a site specific. But I, again, very much needing the input and and I would like to hear from the neighbors very much on on their thoughts as well.
Can, can I ask a question of the proponent? And that is, can the proponent work on the footprint? Possibly making it smaller, possibly moving it over to to try to help that butter, the Bacardi butter, get a, a, a bigger setback and a, and a better buffer?
Can I just raise a, you know, a practical question right now? Is that there's all this talk about site specific and and moving footprints and all this stuff. We are only talking about the zoning. We are not talking about the permit application. And so we need to be careful to make sure that the zoning allows for other kinds of things. But we're not approving zoning for this specific site with saying, okay, every inch is going to be the same. We need to be drafting zoning that's flexible enough to allow for when they apply for the special permit for the issues that Meredith and Denny, you have both raised. That comes in the special permit application, doesn't come in when you're adopting the zoning. And and we shouldn't be saying that it's site specific because that's illegal. So we really need to say we're adopting zoning that would allow for this project, but it could allow for other things as well. Not that there is anything, but we need to be drafting things with that sort of picture in mind. So saying now that we want him to sort of show moving the footprint around, that's not, that's not the point here. We're adopting zoning which would allow some kind of use.
Okay, I actually think it has to do with some of the zoning language, which is if in fact, in the end, they were going to have five less beds, I'd like to zone to the actual bed number. Just, and 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 it's, it's okay, it's okay for me to ask this question, it's okay for them to answer.
What I would say is we should arrive at what we think is appropriate setback in the zoning. And if, when they work on their plan for, for an application, if they find that with all best efforts, they can't make their plan work with that zoning, they can ask us to modify the zoning. That had to be done at least twice for the Hendry site, once or twice for height. Not saying that we, that's the ideal situation, but I think to Kathleen's point is, and what I've tried to say before, is that, you know, even with Wolf Cut Woods, there was a plan that was the concept plan that was what the zoning was kind of drafted with that concept plan in mind. But the final plan is different than that. And it's, and and you want the final plan to be different than that because they're going to have spent more time on it. And.
I'm just trying to assess if they're willing to work with us in that way. If if it's needed, if we go through this and we try and we come up with a setback, are they, can they, do they have wiggle room? Are they willing to work with us? I'm just trying to assess that.
Maybe I can take a shot at answering that. We are absolutely willing to work as hard as we can to make the site as tight as we can. There is. There is perhaps some opportunity to keep refining between now and, uh, when a bylaw would be recommended. But, um, I, I would be careful to get, try and get too specific because this is, this is a tight site. Uh, but we are working. Uh, I know that our guys have gone through at least seven iterations of the building layout, the building design, how it would fit, trying to make it as, as tight and as compact as possible. Um, and we're prepared to, uh, at a future meeting, sit down with the planning board and show that work. Show what we've done and any additional work that we can do in the interim. But, um, you know, um, it is a tight site and we have to be careful and I'll be very careful, um, to, um, advocate, um, for setbacks that are reasonable relative to the site. The one thing I would, I know references, we make reference to greater states. I would point out that that's a forty-seven acre site. And that the, uh, it was, and it was laid out as sort of a, an alternative to a traditional subdivision, if you will. And that there were, uh, single one and two family units that were laid out on a ring road around the property. Uh, so that there were, and there was room to, uh, uh, adopt very robust setbacks. Both from the ring road itself, from other buildings, from the frontage. Um, and, uh, I, I think you have to be careful in adopting that type of, those types of, of constraints on a site that is substantially smaller. You know, forty-seven acres is a big property and sixty percent of that property was actually dedicated to open space. Uh, because there was so much property, because there was so much opportunity for meaningful and enormous buffers. This site is different and I think we have to be careful, um, to how we, um, draw the box, if you will, uh, as to how the site can be developed. And I think, um, it'll be, um, obviously on us to present a site plan, uh, and, uh, materials that, uh, that meet, uh, the, the intent of the bylaw, uh, and, uh, demonstrate that we can buffer this as much as we can. And we look, and, you know, in that regard, we do look forward to working with, uh, Ms. Bacardi and her representatives and others on, on how, the edges to the property can be treated, um, such that the buffers are meaningful.
Rich, Rich Beeler, did you want to chime in or did you want to hear from the public first or?
No, thank you. Um, in the interest of time, yeah, I think we should move to, uh.
Okay. Kathleen, did you wanna tell your, say your two minutes?
Well, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna take a look at the, um, the draft that Ned has done and, and as I said, try to sort of take a look at some of the things that were so, so designed for a specific project. And, um, so all my comments will be on the draft that gets circulated around. But as I said, uh, uh, my, my thought on it is that, um, we need to, you know, remember that this, we're just doing the zoning. We're not approving the project. So. People can keep that in mind.
All right. So I would like to open it up to the public and I'm going to need, um, Allison's help at this, um, point because.
Denny, can I just, um, make a note to you that Tim is in the attendee west side?
Oh, okay. Okay. Can we add Tim Truwinski to the panelists? And, um, I, I don't need, I don't know that we need Tim to explain the importance of, uh, not going general this time. So, um, but it's nice to have him in, on the panel anyway. Did, um, Allison, could you help me? I think Denise Quealy is interested in, in speaking.
She is. Uh, her hand is raised. So, Milton Access, can we promote her or?
Sure, I'll let her talk right now.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, can you hear me?
Uh, yes. Hello. Could you tell us your name and your address?
Sure. Uh, Denise Quealy and I live at sixty-four Old Farm Road.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for allowing me to speak and, uh, you know, I just want to thank you all too for your detail and, and looking at, um, at this important project. I think it's wonderful. And I can already tell that you're gonna work nicely together and as a, you know, member of this town, I love to see that. So again, Denise Quealy, um, I am a resident in Milton, have been for not too long, but we have twenty-three immediate, uh, family members in town. And then with first cousins, you're probably gonna double that or more. And, you know, I've been involved with the Milton Public Schools for many years as president of the MFE, PTO president and a board member of Mike's Five K to Crush Substance Abuse. Have been involved in the community for many, many years and have really valued, uh, the hospital's, um, commitment to and partnership with the community. Um, I learned about this project several months ago or, not several, I guess a few months ago. Um, and I was just impressed by the way the hospital, you know, went after the best value, uh, approach, if you will, in, in order to figure out what would fit well into our community, looking obviously at what's gonna benefit the hospital from a financial perspective, but also and more importantly, what can fit in our community. And I guess that's where I came into the picture, um, in terms of learning about the memory care, um, unit and, uh, Northland. And I've seen the beautiful, um, plans that, you know, the drafts that are out there. And, um, from a personal perspective, um, unfortunately, I am, um, I could probably work at this facility, even though I'm, I'm an attorney. But my mom passed away two weeks ago yesterday, um, from Lewy body dementia. And, um, she passed away here in Milton in the comfort of her home. We kept her home and cared for her for many years, but especially at home within the last eight months. Uh, we retrofitted her house in the Preacher Road, uh, area of Milton. Uh, my husband built her handicap ramp for her. I learned how to use a Hoya lift. Um, I was, um, I'm well versed in how to care, uh, with, you know, for somebody who's been, um, unfortunately diagnosed with, uh, a memory, uh, loss, disease such as Lewy body dementia. If we had had somewhere in Milton where she could go, um, that would have obviously been our preference, but we didn't. And we did what we could and I, I have no regrets in, in what we did and, uh, we did it her way and in our way. But I can tell you that it, it took a toll on us as caregivers. Uh, we hired twenty-four seven care to begin with and then, you know, we were lucky, she was able to sleep through the night. We went down to eleven, twelve hours a day. But, you know, to the tune of fifty to sixty thousand dollars for my dad, who, you know, was a union electrician and would spend every last penny, uh, to care for her. Um, I'm just so happy to learn that something like this is coming into Milton. The importance of it is just tremendous. There are six million American, Americans right now diagnosed with Alzheimer's. They say by twenty fifty, that's gonna go up to twenty, twelve point seven million. One in nine seniors sixty-five plus suffer from some sort of, um, dementia. Uh, one in three seniors dies with Alzheimer's or another dementia. It's, it's so prevalent in our community and I'm just so happy to see that Milton is gonna step up and have something like this. I'm happy to hear that the, uh, planning board seems to be very supportive of the concept. And I understand that the neighbors want to make sure that certain things are addressed and I'm, I'm totally behind that. And I, I have a feeling that the planning board and, and, uh, Milton Hospital as well as, uh, Northland will work together to make that happen. Um, but one thing I just want to bring up that I think is very important, that besides the care that's gonna be given for the person with the memory loss and the family, you know, making it as home as possible, um, because that's really what it is. And even though this is going into a neighborhood, it's gonna become very, a very important home for the, the residents that are there as well as the family that are visiting. And having it look like that as you approach it, I think is very important. And it looks from the renditions I've seen, the buildings that Northland have done, it looks as if they've accomplished that and I, I appreciate that very much. Um, and the second thing I just want to mention, um, is that when my mom was first diagnosed, we had to go to Boston and other places to find basically support groups to talk about how to work through, how to deal with somebody with memory loss. It's a big deal. It's a, it's a, it's a, you have to train somebody to rethink how they deal with somebody. And the team of people that were involved with that in terms of social work is PTO, T, speech, nurses, doctors. Um, you know, at the end of my mom being hospice, the chaplain and, you know, all those come together to really, um, you know, make the best of what we were facing. So I hope that, um, this facility is not only going to be treating the patient, but also the family and the community and offering supports to the community so that we can, you know, take care of our residents. So I think that's all I wanted to say, but I hope, I'm, I'm sorry I spoke so much, but I am very passionate about this. And, um, I do come from it from a very, I feel, knowledgeable standpoint. So I, um, I want to thank you all for your commitment to this and, uh, I want to thank Milton Hospital in Northland for their commitment. And of course Ned, who, um, you know, him and I go way back, but, uh, great job Ned. I really want to thank it Cheryl. Love you Cheryl. Anyway, um, thank you so much to everybody that is on the call. And, um, you know, if you, I, I'm gonna be tracking this and if you have any questions from a, uh, personal perspective for me or whatever, I'm willing to answer them. So, um, thank you so much for your support of this, uh, project.
Well, thank you, Ms. Quealy, and, and we're all very sorry for your loss, but thank you for sharing your story with us. Something, unfortunately, a lot of people I'm sure can relate to, um, but, but thank you for coming out and sharing that with us. I, I did have a question as she was talking. It was, it was one of the questions I meant to ask earlier. Would, um, the residents of Milton, um, would, would they have, would there be any preference? At the facility for Milton residents to be able to get placement or is it a more generic kind of, um, process?
There's nothing in the bylaw that specifically addresses that issue. Perhaps Jim Coughlin, who's the CEO and president of, uh, Northbridge could talk a little bit specifically about, um, their market, how wide the market is, uh, and who they would anticipate to be, um, many of the primary occup- users of, of the facility.
Yeah, I could do that. Good evening, everyone. Jim Coughlin, uh, CEO of the Northbridge Companies. To answer the question specifically, um, forty percent from experience in our other Avita communities that are located in Needham and Newbury, Newburyport and other locales, um, typically forty to fifty percent of the residents moving in are coming from the community itself. And then the balance of them, um, are coming back to be near their adult children. So there's typically a community connection, whether they raised their children in a community like Milton, had retired to, to Florida. Um, and then when they found themselves in a time of need are moving back into the community. So the vast majority of the, the residents moving into these communities, um, have some connection with the community itself. I think the connection with the hospital as well, um, is, is critically important. Our Needham community is very, um, tied to Beth Israel Needham, um, and it's worked out extremely well. And to answer the question, um, that is clearly, uh, proposed, um, we, we do consider ourselves a community asset. Part of our training, um, that we do not only for our staff, but there is a community benefit in the sense that we extend the training to first responders, um, relative to how to, um, manage folks with, with dementia diagnoses. Um, we typically train ER staffs, um, as alongside our staff. Um, and we also run, uh, seminars and, and the likes for the community itself. Um, so that people can be aware, understand, um, the uniqueness of, of dementia-related, um, diseases. So that, that they can be, um, managing their own affairs. It's, it's all about, um, outreach and being a community asset.
Well, thank you. Um, if it's okay, um, I would like to turn to, um, Mr. Henry. Can we bring Mr. Henry, Doug Henry, uh, uh, onto the, um, panelist so he can speak?
Just once again, before he speaks, to say that as a disclosure, we are both members of the abstract club. Thanks.
Um, I don't know if that's something Allison can do or if we need cable access to move Mr. Henry.
He's in right now.
Oh, he's in.
I'm in now, yeah.
Oh, good. Thank you. Hello, Mr. Henry.
Good afternoon. Uh, thank you very much. Uh, unlike, I'm not as in, 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 as an exotic location as Ned, but I'm actually up in Maine on vacation in Kenny Bunkport. So I also join you from afar. Um, I just wanted to briefly tell the board, um, we just, just received the plan a couple of days ago. Um, and I have not had a chance to discuss it with Karen Bacardi yet. I am looking forward to talking to both Ned and Northbridge about the plan and, um, you know, our biggest concern has always been setbacks to protect Karen's property, uh, the view, the view lines. And that's still an issue that needs to be fleshed out. But now that we have a direction as to how the zoning is going to be dealt with, I suppose it won't be generic now. It'll be, uh, I won't use the word site specific Kathleen, but it will be, uh, more tailored to the site. Uh, we'll, we will also be providing comments, um, based on, I think the working draft before the planning board is Ned's draft that Cheryl has updated. So with that as a starting point, we'll be giving you some comments on that. Um, I think a couple of things that will be helpful for both Karen and the neighborhood would be, uh, since we have a, I'm assuming that the, the corners of this newly designed plan are slightly different from the original plan because of, no roadway, et cetera. I think it'd be helpful if it, this new plan was staked out, both the corners with tape between the corners. And I understand that that's not the final plan and that's something that'll have to happen if this zoning gets approved as part of the site plan approval process. But we would like to, if that could be staked out and would also be helpful for both Karen and the neighbors if we could have, um, new elevations that would show what the sightlines would be, particularly with keeping the trees that are on the hospital property. As, as you know, Karen's property doesn't really have trees up to the property line in the most part and most of the trees are on the hospital land. So I think if we could see elevations that showed what that look would be like, as well as new elevations from Highland, that will be very helpful to the neighbors. And that's all I have to add tonight, but we look forward to working with the board and giving some comments that we think will be protective of the neighborhood on this proposed zone.
Thank you, Mr. Henry. Um, I don't know if it's possible to, the, the visual that, uh, Mr. Corcoran showed us, there's a, it's almost like a black line in front of, I think maybe it's a row of arborvitae's, but it's, it's, it's a black line and it's between the building. And I guess that's like a row of arborvitae's. Um, do you know what that is? I, I just wanted to understand what that was. If it's no longer, is it a pathway, a walkway or something?
There are, um.
Or is it a stone wall maybe?
There are three sort of things. Um, there's a retaining wall, which is sort of red and there. There is a gravel walking path that will serve as, as an egress, uh, for, uh, people to get out during an emergency. And there is a green, uh, then there's a drainage swale.
Oh, it's a drainage swale?
So that is, that is a swell that will accept, um, drainage, uh, water should it, you know, hide storm.
And how far is it from the, from the, uh? Now the drainage swale, is that something that is level with the earth or is that something that, uh, uh, would be seen by the butter?
Swale itself wouldn't be seen because it's, it's, it's dug down. It's shallow, but it's, it's, it's bottom is lower than the ground around it.
Right. It's stone. Okay.
They wouldn't, they wouldn't be seen. The que- the question is, you know, as we get into discussions about how to, um, The question is, you know, as we get into discussions about how to buffer the view, I think Doug's right. We do need to look at more specifically the, the tree canopy that is there, the nature of the trees. And then get into identifying types of infill, evergreen presumably be, and many, for instance, because most of the trees on the site are tall and deciduous and you can see underneath them. So we'll look on, work on view shed and, and then what and where to place buffers. You know, the, the building from the closest point of the building to the point of current location on a property line that is closest to Ms. Bacardi's house is that location at seventy-one feet. You know, the, the, everything kind of moves a little closer to her property line as you head out towards Highland Street. But there, there are significant things that need to be done and we'll be, begin to engage with landscape architect to come up with some ideas and concepts. The nature of fencing, you know, do we want, does, would she like fencing? Fencing itself can become something that you now have to buffer in some ways because it becomes its own thing. But types and nature of different types of planting, fencing and other treatments are certainly things that we can start to work on. And then again, also where are they placed? Are they placed closer to the, to the edge of the, of the drainage swale? And between the drainage swale and the walk, and the stone walkway? Or are they closer to the, to the property line or up against the tree line? So that whatever's on the other side of that's not, isn't visible. So those are, you know, those are, those are details, obviously, but important details to get into in our conversations with Mr. Henry and Ms. Bacardi.
Mr. Corcoran, you had sent us some dimensional homework that you had done. I was wondering if, if the other planning board members may know what I'm talking about. We've got, we've got this sent to us through Tim Truinsky. You had, you had sort of gone through.
I started, I started to work on it. Put something out on this plan before, then I'll drop the screen share again. And then go on to that, just to Mr. Corcoran's point and your point about what, what are all these lines through here? I, I think one of the things that I think may be happening is there are windows at a lower level here, which is why this wall is here. And some of this is driven by putting this building lower so that the total height can be lower. But I think for Ms. Bacardi and Mr. Henry, you know, sections through here would be really important because would it be okay to raise the height of this that you don't need the retaining wall necessarily or a shorter one? Or can you get this walkway going in this direction instead of this direction? So that your buffer zone can get increased. So these are the sorts of things that I think, you know, I, I'd like to encourage if people really are interested in, in how these things work together. Heightened setback are working together here and they're driving certain things about this plan that may not be what we all like. So I just wanted to point that out over here. And I know that it's probably hard to visualize that, but they're gonna need to do some more work on that. And, and I'm happy to explain that further at another time.
Well, thank you. I'm glad you said that, Cheryl. See, you can sort of understand why I'm sort of wondering if you could possibly tilt that footprint or shift it or shave it off or some, you know. So I'm, I'm sure you're struggling with the same thing that I'm struggling with. Is this, is this the best, you know, is this the most ideal way to go? So.
And it's, and it's some of this is that, you know, maybe we need to really think about, before we set the height limit, you know, we really have to make sure we understand what it's doing, what is driving in the design, you know. So because I, I do think it would be helpful to, to, to see those site sections from Ms. Bacardi to understand why that's driving certain things here. And whether she would find it more acceptable to have the height go up if she had more tree buffer line here. So it, it's, that's the sort of thing that you can work out in design, but some of the things that are going to be set in the zoning, right, the setback in the height, so.
Right, right. But you can see how it's kind of important to have that discussion because a lesser site, a lesser setback may be more palatable if you can understand, you know, the, the differences between trees or no trees and, and those features that you just mentioned. The organization of those features would be more, more palatable in, in certain ways and other ways. And then that would make it easier to give up five or 10 feet. Or not. I mean, it's, it's up to, so that's something that they need to work out. Now, back to Mr. Corcoran, I just didn't know if you wanted to sort of explain the dimensional requirements document that you sent to us and what your thinking was.
Sure. There was a discussion at the last meeting about doing some comparative, some, creating some form of a comparative document to, so that you could see in one place what all the different zoning requirements are relative to height setbacks, et cetera. Because our, our bylaws, they're not easy to find. And there was discussion about requesting that Tim work on something like that. And I had, I have done that in a number of occasions. In fact, I think the document that I sent you was, was a, was taken from comparative analysis of setbacks, et cetera, that I did for the Little Sprouts childcare proposal over on Blue Hill Avenue. And I noticed when I printed it out that it, that I didn't delete the, the separate table on the last page, so you may have seen that. But what I tried to do and what I think I would, would propose to add to would be, I tried to lay out all of the different height limit requirements as they relate to different zoning, particularly in our general, our, so to speak, general zoning. Double A, A, B and C, and then D, D one and D two, which is sort of built into the general zoning bylaw. So what are their heights? What are the minimum lot sizes? What's the minimum frontage requirement? What are the setback, minimum setback requirement, required in each of those? So that you would have something in tabular form that you can compare to what was, what being tried to do here. Both from comparing from a relative site and scale of site, you know, size of site, amount of frontage, how much setback, what heights and how much setback should be appropriate. And I would add, I will add to that. I did get a request earlier today to consider adding other provisions like Woodmere's bylaw, the, the Greater States bylaw, I'll do the condominium conversion, the cluster zoning, et cetera. So that the board would have a complete table which it can easily compare what it did. I did it in draft form. I sent it to Tim yesterday so that he could see it, see if it was something that would be helpful to him and his work for you. Obviously, he sent it on to you and, and it's something I'm, I'm happy to continue to work on and, and make available for you for consideration at your next meeting on the 22nd.
Thank you, Mr. Corcoran. Thank you for that explanation. That was very helpful of you to do. I, I'm going to ask the, our, our planning staff to put this up onto our website. Perhaps we could create a file that would include our, you know, the special permit, you know, language and, and these sort of documents, those kind of things. But I just put that out there. Okay, do we have anybody else from the public who would like to speak tonight? All right.
I, I am, I'm Mike Warrizak. I'm VP of Development for, for Northbridge. And I'm not one of the public members, but I do have one thing that I would, I just say here. As we move forward with the design of this building and as we all work together, the important consideration is that this building has to be operated in a certain way. You know, in other words, the operations requirements. For instance, you need a floor plate where a large floor plate, at least in part of the building, for staffing requirements during evening times. And, you know, to be able to use a more efficient number of staff members to keep pricing down where people can actually afford it. So as we move forward with our design, at times we may bring this to your, you know, mention certain things that are very important for us in operating this building moving forward. So we're just requesting that you keep that in consideration as we go forward.
Thank you for that information. Very helpful. Okay, all right. I'm just gonna check. Do we have anybody else from the public who would like to participate in our discussion? Oh, Ms. Lee, Ms. Georgia Lee, can we bring her in as a panelist? Georgia, let us know when you've arrived.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, Georgia.
I'm in dark video.
There you are.
I'm practically in the dark. Maybe I'll turn a little bit. Ned, thank you for your specific comments tonight. Some of this was new information for the neighbors and we appreciate it. I wanted to ask about the open space. I think that there was a conversation that thirty percent, thirty-three percent of the land would be open space and not more than thirty-three percent would be parking and driveway space. And I, I want to make sure I understand what our exact acreage is because we're saying percentages of acreage and I am not clear on what the acreage in fact is. And then I want to clarify what open space means and clarify that the parking space is not also open space.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I just wanted to have Georgia tell us her address.
Yeah, sorry, 59 Highland Street in Milton.
Excellent. Thank you so much. I just want to check all the boxes. I thought those are excellent questions. Thank you. And, and I'm interested to hear Mr. Corcoran's response.
Sure. And this, this language that we haven't suggested to be modified in the bylaws as it currently exists. The, the site itself is a little over 10 acres. Some portion of that is wetland and wetland and it contains buffers. So when we talk about thirty-three percent, thirty-three percent goes to the area that is not included in the wetland calculation. I don't know the exact acreage of the wetlands, but we define buildable, the, the bylaw defines buildable area as that area that is really outside of wetlands. The twenty-five foot no disturb zone from the wetlands. Vernal pools, if they exist, and the 100-foot setback from the vernal pools. Those areas are not developable, generally developable under the town's wetland bylaw and under the state's Wetland Protection Act. So when this bylaw was drafted back in 2013, it provided that those areas could not be included in a calculation for buildable area for, for, for building, lot coverage and for open space requirements. This bylaw would require that thirty-three percent of the remaining land, land that is not wetland, where land is not setback, also be incorporated into open space. In open space, there's, there are definitions laid out in the details in, in what can be included in open space, but they cannot include buildings. They cannot include driveways and they cannot include parking areas. Any, any of that type of impervious surface. The bylaw would also limit the lot coverage for a building to thirty-three percent of the available buildable area and would limit to the driveways and parking areas to thirty-three percent of that buildable area. Basically cuts the buildable area into three equal sections, if you will. So there's upland, which is developable, and there's wetland, which is not. And that's the way it's laid out.
Can I ask a follow-up question?
Oh, sure you can. Sure you can.
Ned, thank you for that answer. Are the terraces that are designed into the project, are those terraces considered open space?
I don't know the answer to that at this point. There is, there is, there are, the provision, the bylaw does provide that spaces like that can be included as open space. It's not building.
Right, but I thought you said that it couldn't be a perv, impervious surface.
No, I'm referring to driveways, walkways and parking lots.
Ah, got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Lee. Nice to see you. Did you have any more questions? Not tonight? Okay. All right. Let's see if we have anyone else from the public who would like to participate. Okay, Ms. Wells, L O Wells, could we invite L O Wells up to, to the panelist spot? Let us know when you've arrived.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can hear you now, Ms. Wells. How are you tonight?
Thank you. It's Ella Wells. I live at 179 Highland Street and I'm a town meeting member also. And I have a couple of questions. I was not able to participate in the site visit that occurred a couple of months, a month or two ago. But I understand that during that site visit, that several manholes were discovered or pointed out and that there was an underground stormwater pipe system that was discovered. And I wanted to know what the hospital or North and/or Northbridge have done to determine whether that is a legal system, how it can be repaired, how they're going to correct it. Can they get, can they have, do they have to tear it out? I want, I, I'm not a stormwater expert, but I understand that there are rules on how, what stormwater systems have to follow. And if that's an existing stormwater system and it's not, and it's illicit, how are we, how is the hospital and Northbridge gonna deal with it? Are they gonna rip it out? Because I understand, I think someone said that there's an eight-inch pipe that is drawing water from that through the manholes. And that, that draws a lot of water out of the landscape if it's an eight-inch pipe. So that's my first question is how are you addressing the existing potentially illicit stormwater system that's there? That has been neglected for the whole time that the hospital has owned the land, to my knowledge, and probably was neglected even before that. They probably inherited this whole stormwater system when they bought the land. My, my second question has to do with whether, what they have done to find out whether the property is polluted. Because there was some mention made at the site plan visit that there's an oil, potential oil spill where there used to be a farmhouse and the garage behind it. So I want to know what has been explored about that. And because a good part of the property used to be farmland, my understanding is farmlands could be inherently considered brownfield properties because of all the chemicals that were used. So I want to know whether the EPA has been contacted to do a investigation as to whether this is Brownfield's property. So those are my two main questions. Thank you.
Okay, so Mr. Corcoran, I don't know if you have any, any information on the old stormwater system and?
We understand there's some old pipes in the ground. There's a, there's a manhole in the property. We'll deal with that in the course of dealing with the Conservation Commission. We have to meet all new current stormwater management standards. And those standards will direct us on how we will manage those pipes. My sense is they'll all come out. My sense is they'll all come out and will we be replaced with new, robust, conforming stormwater management systems. And 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 that'll be part of the site design. Separate question regarding pollution, I don't know anything about that. We're we're requesting permission to conduct test pits, however, at six different locations so that we can understand what is in the soils and what the soils are, what soil composition. And I would assume that any of those test pits would 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 identify, well, certainly will identify whatever's in the ground. Those test pits generally go down eight, nine, 10 feet. And we do a soils analysis with respect to them for a whole number of reasons. And they'll be, they'll be sampled, so whatever's there, if there's something there, we have to, we'll have to deal with it. As far as brownfields, we have no knowledge about that. And I don't expect that we'll be addressing that issue necessarily unless it gets raised in the Conservation Commission process.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wells. Did you have any further questions tonight?
No, I haven't had a chance because of the fact that I just received the the plans and the the wetlands maps. I I haven't had a chance to review them. So I hope to do that before the Conservation Commission meeting.
Okay. All right, well, thank you. Yeah, we're, this is going to be an ongoing process. We're going to be having a lot of public meetings. So thank you for participating. We'll see you next time. Okay, all right, I'm I'm checking, I'm not seeing any hands raised, but let me check. I'm not seeing any, so, all right. I guess we can bring it back to the planning board now. All right, so would we like to discuss, yes, Cheryl?
I know that there had been a site lock previously. I was unable to attend. If we have opportunity for a site lock, another one, I I would welcome that.
Yes, I would really like that too, especially if we can stake the building and not just the corners because it's kind of confusing. We'd kind of want to see the sight lines, you know, the and I and I know I was out there with Ned. It was a work in progress. So he's trying to explain it to me, but it was kind of hard because it was a work in progress. But if we, you, I don't want the next board to go through the same thing we were going through, so.
We can report back to you on that on the 22nd.
Okay. Okay, all right. All right, would we like to talk as a board now? And I mean, I'm ready to entertain a motion, but I also wanted to give everybody an opportunity to talk. I don't think we've heard much from Rich. But Rich, did you want to talk or?
No, I mean, I don't have any, it's a lot been said. I mean, I'm following it. I mean, I agree with a lot of the comments that I've made. I'm kind of where you are at. I'm kind of ready to move forward.
Okay.
Any question on time and schedule? When does the warrant close?
That I think, I think we've, mid-November, but I.
We've talked about it before, but I'm sorry.
Yeah, we don't have it. Yeah, we don't have it. I don't know if Allison might have that information.
So I'm actually, I'm actually still waiting, yeah, hi. I I I had asked the Select Board Office for a timeline on that. I don't think it's quite been pinned down. I'm going to double check in my email to see. But they know that we're interested, so as soon as it's known, you'll know. But let me, let me double check in my emails and see if that's something that they've shared with.
So then, Danny, the idea of taking a vote would be, it would send them, we would send that intention to the Select Board so that they know that we have, that we're planning an article for the Wintertown meeting?
Yeah, so what we would do, I think the, I think the goal of the vote is that we, as a planning board, are planning to adopt what was a citizen article as our own article, as a planning board article. It's the article we discussed tonight.
Danny, it's a correction. It wasn't a citizen's petition. It's always been presented to us as a potential article.
That's true, but it was also presented that it was a a citizen article that was going to town meeting if we didn't adopt it, so it was a citizen.
That's separate from.
Which we had not adopted, which we are.
Right.
Which we are entertaining a motion to adopt tonight, because we had never adopted it before, so. Okay.
So I think then I would, I mean, I'm comfortable taking a vote, Danny, tonight to our intention to submit an article that would be an amendment to this section. I can get the section number here.
Yeah, Special Permit 13, Assisted Living Residence Development, Section 3, Subsection P.
Okay, thanks. I mean, and I I think that's all it needs to be in terms of a motion, you know? And because we've oftentimes voted on moving something and if we feel as if we haven't had adequate time, we can always withdraw it, right?
I agree.
I'd like having the intention, it sets some timeframes for us. And it, and that's why I asked about the warrant because, as we all know, that we think we have a lot of time before we get to a Wintertown meeting. But the reality, when you back out, the warrant printing, the warrant committee, the Select Board considering it, we actually don't have a lot. And and I think it's important, if we're going to do it, we map out what we want to discuss in the next couple of meetings so that we meet those those targeted dates. So we don't get to a point where we want to, we don't think we can get it done. You know how we did like with the special permit, some special permits, we say, okay, this meeting, we're going to talk about whatever it was, site design, building design, or whether it was traffic or stormwater or what have you. So if we can kind of map out a schedule for what we think we could focus on for the next couple of meetings, then it'll help us get to that endpoint, I think.
Okay, I think that's a good idea. Our next meeting is jammed, so I will work with the staff and we'll come up with, we'll work on an approach.
Great, thank you.
Okay, and and
I'll second the motion.
All right. Well, so wait a minute, so the motion is to adopt this article as our own?
My motion is actually to put forth an article for the Wintertown meeting that would be an amendment to that section of the zoning code.
Right. That's the motion that I was going to second.
And you cited the zoning code section.
It's Special Permit 13, Assisted Living Residence Development, Section 3, Subsection P.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor? Meredith Hall?
Hi.
Rich Beeler?
Yeah.
Cheryl Tagayas?
Yes.
Kathleen O'Donnell?
Yes.
Danny Swinson is a yes. All right, so I just wanted to explain to the public that we have said this a lot over the many meetings that we've had. But we, as a planning board, feel that we're in a stronger position if we adopt the article and do the best we can as a planning board to make it work for this site with a rigorous public process with the help of the Milton Hospital and Northbridge Companies. So we are all embarking on a rigorous effort here to make this the best it can be for town meeting. And we are all working our best to address the public's concerns as well as the planning board's concerns or issues. And, you know, if we can turn any drawbacks around into benefits, that's our goal, so. All right, so thank you. Thank you, Mr. Corcoran, Mr. Walersky. I'm not pronouncing your name right, but.
Walersak.
Walersak. I was never going to get that in a million years.
Thank you.
And 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 I I have a very hard time seeing all the names and Mr. Fernandez and and so on, Jim Coughlin, the rest of your team. And Mr. Corcoran, thank you for coming out tonight.
Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you, and and thank you, and Mr. Buck as well. And and thank you to the public. I know this has been at times confusing and a little bit of a bumpy ride, but it's it's going to be a better project and and a better article with the public involvement. So I am requesting that you continue to show up and and to to voice your concerns and and any suggestions or ideas that you have. So thank you for your letters and thank you for your participation tonight and in the previous nights. Thank you. Okay, so we have, it's almost 10 o'clock. And we could talk about more, more of our winter zoning articles. But I think, given the late hour, I would only ask if there's any update on ADU. Do we have any language that that we can start taking a look at or where are we at?
I got jammed in a couple of closings and a lawsuit, so as an expert, actually, so, which is surprising. But I had glasses and gray hair, so that's why that counts. So I will have a draft submitted to staff for the next meeting.
Okay, appreciate that. Thank you, because we want to have a rigorous public process on that, and we have a lot coming at us, as Cheryl keeps reminding us. We have a lot coming, so, okay, well, I will entertain.
And I apologize.
Oh, don't apologize. You 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 had a very legitimate. Okay, well, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Danny, before you do that, can I, can I give you some some breaking news?
Oh, yes.
So maybe a little less than an hour ago, the Board of Appeals approved pending the doing of some edits and corrections and additions, the Ice House 40B project. So once, once they get that executed and filed at the clerk's office, that'll be 52 condo units, 13 affordable, ground floor commercial space on the Ice House site. Really, the culmination of a lot of work that the planning board has done, incidentally, although you guys haven't really been been involved in the 40B process. But I thought that was really great news because I think that's a a pretty great project. And, you know, credit to everyone involved in that.
Well, as far as 40Bs goes, it's probably one of the better ones, but I'm sure, I'm sure. I'll I'll leave it at that. Thank you for that update. So did I get a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor? Meredith Hall?
Yes.
Rich Beeler?
Yeah.
Cheryl Tagayas?
Yes.
Kathleen O'Donnell?
Yes.
Danny Swenson, yes. Have a great night, everyone.
Thank you.
Bye, everyone.
Bye, everyone.